Said it's one meeting a month since we have nobody coming in anymore.
You meet every week?
It's, it's.
Two weeks.
Don't worry.
Yeah, they're busy again.
Yeah, this is just a temporary. Well, we've been actually quite busy.
Here we go. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of this, the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals this August 22nd. I'm required by law to state the following. My name is Steve DeYoung and I'm the chairman of this illustrious board. We will now convene this, the August 22nd meeting. As required by General Law, Chapter 30A. Excuse me, Sections 18 through 25. And as well pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, which is known as an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. That being the COVID state of emergency four years ago. And as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting on Channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. And please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees via Zoom. Who may, however, request to participate by using the raise hand function. We start our meetings under this edict by doing a roll call to assure a quorum. Mr. Igo.
Present.
Mr. Frapery.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
And via Zoom, Mr. Piana Banco. Bianco, I'm sorry.
Present.
Anthony, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me for my.
It's quite all right.
Okay. Well, they do it with DeYoung all the time, so you're just getting what I get, okay? Well, good evening, everybody, and again, my name is Steve DeYoung. We have a fully constituted board. And we're going to go right to our agenda this evening, and that is. Petition 5125. That of Joseph M. Phillips, who has property located at 8 Lindale Road, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts. That property's in an R-25 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 104. Point 3.2, subparagraph 2 of the zoning bylaws, or in the alternative of variance under Section 203.5 for side setback relief in construction of a 27-by-10 addition to his home. Good evening, sir. Who are you?
Joseph Phillips.
Fine, why don't you tell us all about your petition, if you would, please?
Well, we've owned the house, our family's owned the house since 1960. I bought it in 2015 with my wife. And we're looking to put a one-story side-facing, 27-foot-long, 10-foot-wide addition, which would widen our kitchen. We have a child with disabilities that's in a wheelchair. We want to do a ramp from our driveway right into the house, whereas now she has to go around a pathway and up five stairs. So we would also, we're also looking to make some adjustments to the counter heights.
Is there a ramp there now for her?
No. Bring her in the side porch.
I had to build one of those for my mother at one point, that 1-to-12 pitch that brought it almost out to the street.
It's what actually end right at the existing driveway, which is good. And our neighbors behind us actually live near us at Long Metal. And they've had their house for 45 years. And the neighbor to the left's been there for 30 years. And neither one of them had an issue.
Oh, and they're the people that wrote these very lengthy oppositions, huh? Nah, I'm only kidding. All right, so as I indicated to you before we started our meeting, we now open it up to board questions of your, of you particularly, and what your petition's all about. It seems pretty straightforward, but we're going to start now with Mr. Igo to my left. Mr. Igo, any questions of our petition?
Yes, I do. There's a memo in the file regarding the Conservation Commission. Have you been before the Conservation Commission yet?
No.
I think before we take any action on this, we might want to have him go to the Conservation Commission because they're speaking about regrading it, and he may have to comply with 100-year flood zone, which would require you to raise that, I believe, up in the air.
Yeah, usually we like to see Concom approval, but, I mean, it's not a mandated requirement, but we like to see that, particularly when we might be talking about raised structures. But that's okay.
I have some other questions as well.
We can still act on it tonight, but it's something that is our usual, so. Anything else at this point?
Yes, I do. Just lost my train of thought. Do you live in this house?
No.
You rent this house out?
No.
Was this house rented about a week or so ago?
No, my son was here.
Who was he with?
13 kids from school.
Oh, okay.
That's why it was memorable.
I guess that's what he's getting at.
Okay.
He had his.
Yeah, okay.
He actually, he actually graduated two years ago, but he had two friends back from the military and his former teammates from Holy Cross.
Okay. I think what we're looking at here, by the way, is a variance. I don't think we can grant a special permit on this. Because this is a brand-new, nonconformity where there wasn't one before.
Is it on the alternative tonight? Oh, yeah, okay, good. No, he requested relief in the alternative.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Frapery.
So the setback on that corner right now to the side, is that a side or a back?
It's a side.
It's a side?
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
Yeah. I could never figure out that one. Is it two corners? I mean, there's two sides?
Two fronts and two sides.
Two sides, yeah, okay. So it's a side setback, and it's currently like about 18 and 1/2 feet?
Correct.
And you're trying to, what you want to do is go down to close to nine?
Nine, eight, nine, six, I think it measured. It starts off in compliance, and as you get further down the addition, it goes down to that nine.
So you're looking seven feet into the setback, I think.
So six, right?
Uh, yeah, okay. Six plus a little bit. It's a single story, it looks like a nice addition. I don't know. How, how close are the houses on the other side of the fence? I took, I just drove by and I saw there's a fence that goes down that.
So Vinnie next to us is probably another, his.
10 feet, maybe?
12 feet.
Corner.
His, his house is actually set up, so for instance, if we went straight across on the side of our house, we could walk right through his backyard over to the, uh, a budding street.
Yeah, it looks like there's almost three, three lots come together in your backyard. It's pretty close. There is a fence there now. That, that's all I have, so you're looking to go down by about six feet inside the lot. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I'm a little, you know, a little concerned with all the building on this lot. It's up to 25%, which is the maximum coverage we allow. Yeah. Nine, eight or nine feet sideline setback is less than I'd like to see. I think this property was given quite a bit of relief before when the other addition was done in terms of having it only 16 feet from the street line. Looks like it's weird, too. It looks like the, looks like the, uh, your lot line goes right into the pavement of Lindale Road, which is a little unusual, but that has nothing to do with you.
Right, it's a strange lot.
Yeah. All right. The, who else was I going to say? I think the addition looks nice. I'm glad that your neighbors don't have any problem with it. I'm slightly on the fence about you know, getting eight or nine feet from the, uh, from the sideline here, but I guess if the neighbors don't mind, I could be enticed to not carry the. That's all.
Thank you. And Mr. Panabianco, do you have any questions of our petition?
I do. When are you looking to build?
No, no. No set plans. We have a local contractor, Lor Construction, from South Dennis. Probably, you know, in the winter.
Okay. I, because I have the same question that Sean, Mr. Igo, raised. It just, it looks like the next Concom hearings they have are in September. If there's not an immediacy of building plans, it doesn't make sense for us to hold off and to see what the Concom does before we make a determination here. You know, that's, that's my concern personally.
Regarding the, the flood, so they would dig a foundation, correct, and put in the, those flood channel?
I have no idea what they're going to do. That's between you and Concom.
Yeah.
You know, we, we've seen many different resolutions to, to construction within flood zones, some that don't require any relief because the Concom feels it's not an issue.
This thing's a full seller.
Well, it's just, it's not, it's, it's, they have to weigh in. It's just that simple.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to correct something I said wrong.
Please.
I was looking at the wrong, wrong, uh, what do you call it? No, these things. Uh, yeah. And the, actually, the site, the house is only 14.1% of the lot coverage, not 25, so.
Oh, no.
Just wanted to correct that.
Thank you.
Well, is that it? I, I, you know, I'm going to tell you, first of all, I'm, I'm thinking that I, I agree with two people I've heard. I, I always want to see a Concom, uh, you know, review of this because as far as I'm concerned, they're here to protect the environment. We're here as well to protect the environment, but most importantly, to make sure that the project meets either the zoning requirements or an exception to the zoning requirements via a special permit or a variance. So I always think that the cart has to start with them before it comes to our horse. And I'm, I, I I love to see people get what they want, but I'm always troubled when I see us creating something that comes as close to a, to, to less than 50% of the required amount of a side setback. You're at 8.89, it calls for 20 in this, 20, no.
15.
Calls for 15 in this zoning district, doesn't it? Uh, 25.
Yeah, 15 feet on the side setback.
Yeah, okay. So you're, you're more than 50% away, that's, that's good. Uh, I was thinking 20 in my head, I apologize to you. By the way, I knew you looked familiar to me when I walked in tonight. You've been before us as recently as 2019.
2015, I think.
Well, isn't our prior decision 2000? I'm looking at one here, July 24, 2019.
2019, yeah.
And it appears to have my signature, so. I think I sat through it.
Yeah, that's when the other addition was allowed.
2015, okay.
So we have here a memo, and let's read the memo in. But I'm going to tell you, I'm, I'm going to be not in favor if it should go to a, a vote this evening without Concom input. I think that's very important. I'm not trying to give you more work to do.
No, I understand. I just go on the website and look at the contact for conservation and reach out to them and ask them what they need.
Yeah, we don't give, I'm sorry, but
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
People ask us these sorts of things all the time. We can refer you to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, sure.
We can't tell you how to do it. And so a memo from that same board. Finn Kelly, who is the conservation agent, says as follows. A request for determination filing with an engineered plan showing no regarding, showing.
No regrading.
Oh, regrading. It'd be nice if I just read the word on the paper, wouldn't it? No regrading is required for the addition and is required for the proposed work at 8 Lydell, Lyndle, rather, Road due to the 100-year flood zone, which triggers the Wetlands Protection Act and the Yarmouth Wetland Bylaw. Conservation Commission is the, has not yet received or reviewed an application for this project, and it is not guaranteed that any application submitted would be closed in a single hearing. For your information, we next meet on September 5 and September 19. We will forward any additional information once the application is received and a hearing is held. So I, I truly believe that that needs to precede us here this evening.
All right.
And I think with that, is that?
I'd like to have a discussion a little bit about this petition.
Well, that, that's fine, we can do that, but understanding that, are you asking us to still go forward with a vote this evening? Or would you agree that you need to go to conservation?
No, I'll go to, I'll go to conservation.
Okay. So Mr. Igo has some comments he'd like to make about the petition. Please go ahead.
Well, I, I think it's a very nice-looking addition, very tastefully done, but I do have some concerns. Those houses, your neighbor to going down South Shore Drive is very close to that lot line. You're proposing a second-floor deck that's going to look right down onto him.
Well, we're not going to put a deck, we're not going to put a deck, but we're going to put the, we were going to put railings up just to finish it off.
Well, it says deck on the top.
Also a deck on the plan.
So I, I don't know what that means, but it shows decking on your plan.
All right, yeah. We're just going to put a firestone, okay, sure.
I am very concerned that this is getting a little bit too close to that lot line. Plus, the last time you were here, we gave you front setback relief, and you built a house that's only about 14 feet off the street. So this house has seen some considerable relief already, so I'm a bit reluctant to vote in favor of this. I think this lot may be built out, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, I mean, are you suggesting that, are you going to the Conservation Commission?
Sure, yeah, I will.
Is it your intention to do that?
Yes.
All right, so then we wouldn't need to deal with that now, but you're hearing at least one member that's saying that he has concerns about the proximity to the sideline as being too, too encroaching to the neighborhood. I, you know, particularly if there's a second-floor deck, so any relief I would be inclined to want to agree to would have to require that not be used as a
Fair enough.
as a decking for outdoor use or for whatever use. Not that it not be enclosed and that it not be used as an observation deck. So we don't need to address those things tonight, though, but it would, just to give you a flavor for where we're going, okay? All right, anybody else have any comments they want to make before we move it along?
No, just that I have the same concerns that Sean has, so.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, consider these things, okay?
Absolutely.
And please be attentive to them when you come in so that we can try to do what we can possibly do to meet your needs and goals. Okay, so with that, how about you, Anthony? Anything you wanted to add in before we move on?
Uh, nope, can you address it?
Okay, so we wouldn't be looking at, seeing you again until October because you'd have to go before the Concom. And undoubtedly, they're going to give you a, a statement of conditions.
Okay.
And, you know, then those would become part of our decision if one were ever granted by this board to give you relief. So I do agree that the relief you're seeking is that of a variance. There's no nonconformity over there now, save for what exists on the ground from probably the time the lot was actually configured.
The only nonconformity is what we created.
Or what we're creating, if allowed.
What we've already created by giving him prior front setback relief.
Sure, what is that, a garage that went up front of?
Yeah, that's a bedroom.
It's a bedroom.
Bedroom, yeah. Okay, well, again, we're not going to the merits tonight, just.
Right, mine.
You do your Concom thing and then come back and see us.
Fine.
So what are we talking about in the last meeting in October?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's October 24th. October 24th?
Is that okay with you? Are you available that night?
Sure.
You'd have to sign an extension agreement with us. If you fail to do that, we can't, we'd have to act on it tonight, so. If we could have an extension agreement, let's get it. You'll go over there and take a second to read it, please. Make sure, well, you can take a minute, you can take an hour to read it, I guess, just let us know how much time you need.
I didn't really understand.
If it's me, I might have to read it five times to make sure the word is what I'm reading instead of what I'm thinking it says.
One second. I think it's one big kitchen versus three more kitchen. I think it's just one. I think it's just one. This is kind of the whole, like, open right here.
Well, if you pass that up to me up here, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
So I want to check the top one?
Let me see. What are you asking? Yes, yeah, yeah.
So the top one?
Actually, both of them. Yeah, we're going to. I'll be made within 100 days. We're going to do one. Got to do two. And we're fine there, two. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
The top one's the one we don't sign. I'll check. You have a great night, thank you. First, we have to move on, we have to have a motion.
Okay.
A vote on the motion, okay? We have to have a motion, in fact, so is somebody prepared to make one?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension.
Second. Continue the matter till October 24th.
And we have a, a good agenda that evening that we could add this? All right. Till October 24, we say. A motion has been made by Mr. Frapery, seconded by Mr. Martin, to agree to a continuance at the petition as a request until October 24, 24. Does the board care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote? Hearing none? Mr. Igo?
Aye.
I keep forgetting, almost forgetting, we have to do these by roll call, don't we? Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Panabianco?
Aye.
An a and a, so that carries 5-0. It's continued to 10:24. We look forward to seeing you, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you have a good night.
Yep, have a good weekend.
And today is, what, 8:22?
Summer flew by.
That brings us to our second and last matter this evening, and that is petition 5126, A&amp;M Management Company, a group LLC, rather. Is that you, sir? Come right up, please. Okay, who's that fellow with you? Is that your legal counsel?
No, I'm alone, I'm, nice to see you again.
Just kidding, it's your son, for heaven's sake.
Yes, yeah, he is my associate.
All right, so this is, I have to read something to the record, okay? So this is the A&amp;M Management Group LLC concerning property located at 2 Butler Cupleane, South Yarmouth, Mass. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Sections 104.3.2 of the zoning bylaw or in the alternative of variance under 203.5 of the bylaw and/or to modify a special permit dated, known as a permit number 4984 dated May 1, 2023. For side setback relief. Alexander Nemnoff is appearing this evening on behalf of A&amp;M Management Group. And Alexander, good to see you again, as you said. Let's go ahead and have you tell us all about your petition.
Uh, yes. Good evening. The petition about to have opportunity to have access to the basements, like to build a prefabricated on landing bulkhead and also to rebuild the staircase which we have from the, from the side to the water. We have some existing on a worse condition. I have some photo and I hope and did provide it to you. But the existing staircase, it goes on a setback, and right now it looks like a new will stay from, from setback like on a 13.3 feet. And I passed you, thank you, again. You give me opportunity to have a corner of the new house on like a probably in a same same distance from the setback.
All right.
How I know the conservation was okay with that? And that's why I.
Hear that one?
The conservation is okay with that.
We do, yeah. All right.
And also the neighbors, we had a conversation with the neighbors, like personally, and we have some, his confirmation by email. He, he's okay with that.
Well, this file just keeps getting thicker and thicker, doesn't it? You say we have an email from a neighbor? Is that something that they have sent to the board? All right, so we would receive that, but it has to be retained by us and kept as an exhibit, okay?
Yeah.
Bring it up to us if you want us to read it.
Yes, please. I don't know if it's necessary or not, but just in case you ask me what I have, and I would like to give you all points of what I have.
All right. So what you've just handed me is an email dated, looks like May 28, 2024?
Yes, correct.
And who is this from?
You will find the name, it's John. I, I don't remember his last name.
To you in connection with this?
Kellyanne?
Yeah, 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 it's my neighbors.
Okay.
It's my neighbors.
All righty.
On the left side? Yes.
Okay. Is that it? All right, so we're going to open it up and we'll start first with Mr. Martin, please. Any questions of our petition?
Yeah, I guess so. Is, this house have a walkout basement?
Uh, right now we have we, we don't have any, any staircase from the basement outside.
No walkout in the back where the lower level that goes out?
No.
Okay. So you're trying to gain access to the basement?
Correct, from the left side of the house.
From the left side of the house. All right. What do you mean by elevated stairway with associated landings?
Oh, um, because it was a little bit familiar, like the first time. We had two options, yes, it could be prefabricated bulkhead or we could do like some regular landing underground and, and build some steps which will go like close to the left side wall to will not to go so farther to the setback.
I guess I still don't understand elevated stairway with associated landings. I can understand the bulkhead basement entrance being built in closer. Does anybody else understand that?
Are they talking about the dock area?
No, I talk about the bulkhead.
It has nothing to do with this?
No.
Dock area?
No, no.
Okay. I, I don't understand that myself.
So if we.
Well, I mean, what, associated landings, are you going to have like an area halfway down that's got a landing before you continue down into the basement, or?
Mr. Martin, there should be another document in your, that shows the elevated stairways with landings. Correct, Mr. Igo, yes.
I missed that one.
Are you talking about building a walkway from the house to the dock?
Well, not from the house, like, um, in the end of the land, we need to do some like landing and the stairs which will go, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, that's what. Are you talking about this stair, this area right here?
Oh, no, I think we was a little bit confused. I, I, I talk about the bulkhead.
Talking about the elevated walkway you're talking about, what's that?
Uh, new staircase.
Going down to your dock?
Yes.
Okay.
From your yard? Three feet off the sideline?
Yes.
So he's looking for a walkway to get down there?
Yeah.
That's going to hook up with the dock.
That's replacing the old one, is that my understanding?
Uh, I, I don't think there's one there, it's going to be redeveloped, but it's.
It shows existing dock and stairs.
Well, that's his existing dock right there.
Is that a different place? I know.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're, they're going to build a new one, that's, that's an example of his elevated stairway right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So basically, it has to do with the dock.
Okay.
Three feet off the sideline.
You've already gone to conservation-
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's stay in an order here, Mr. Martin.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin, please.
That's right. As you were just saying, at the stairway and very close to the lot line over there, and I would think that they they're just getting closer and closer and everything, yeah? I know the Callahan property is very large acreage. And if he doesn't mind, certainly that comes into play in my mind.
So the reason why we wanted to stay in the same place where it was existing because like in other way, we need to cut some nature, trees and some some bushes. I think it was much easier to keep where we have like from the conservation to will not to change some debris and so on. And also, it's just like, thank you again, you you confirm our setback on a corner of the house, like a 13.6 feet and here it's like a 13.3. Yes, it's for difference for three inches.
Did you consider putting it on the other side of the house?
Dock?
No, the bow there.
Oh, bulkhead. I thought we're talking about the staircase to the dock.
Now, we're talking about the entirety of what you're seeking relief for. So one of the things you're talking about is the bulkhead, and I think Mr. Martin was speaking about the bulkhead.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, it was a little bit-
Did you give any consideration to putting the bulkhead on the other side of the house?
Or in the back?
Or in the back, for that matter, if it's light enough, I guess.
I think it's a no-build zone in the back. I don't know if they could.
But if it's like a bulkhead which like I understood we have two options, like one prefabricated which will go like from the foundation closer to the setback. Or we could do under the ground like a landing three by three and put a staircase right on a wall. It will be tighter to compare to build, to put prefabricated. It will be for 30% less space. And it goes under the ground which not, if I not mistake, not in for like a setback zone, like retaining wall.
I don't know. I may come up with some other questions, but that's it for now. So let me understand. You have a full basement right now, correct?
Yes.
And what you're looking for is something that provides you stairs down to a door which you're going to put in the foundation?
Yeah.
Okay, so it would go down from ground level down?
Yes.
Nothing that would be raised above ground?
No.
Okay. So I know the prefabricated type ones. I think I have one myself. And those are pretty small. How long is that? It's six feet deep? Is that how long that would be about?
Yes.
All right. And it does, that would reduce the side setback from the closest right now we have is 13.6 on the front corner. And this would take it to 10.8, so talking about four feet, about, not even about three feet. Is there a reason why you couldn't do it on the other side of the house?
Well, another side is just like, because the neighbors on the right side, it's pretty close. It's just like a one space to like a walk and also to park car. That's why-
Is that the driveway on the right side? I don't think so.
It's not a driveway. It's some like, I could show you a picture, but yes, probably it's like it could be just like place where it's possible to walk on.
You have 20 feet on that, I think, yeah, 20 feet on that side, but you only have 13 or 15 about where you're probably trying to put it. At least I understand what you're trying to do, I think. I'm not sure if there's another place to put it, which would be nice. As far as the stairs in the back, did, is this the conservation? You went to the Conservation Commission and that's what this is? And they were okay with everything, basically? Any requirements for it are in this document?
Some debris, some plants.
She would follow, I assume.
We already changed the plan and submitted to them and they was okay with it.
And this is really replacing stairs that were already there location-wise? Is that correct?
Sorry.
There's a picture of some stairs that were-
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just take some pictures today. I could show you.
No, no. It's part of a, it's part of a document that you have submitted.
Okay.
There is a photo of what proposed stairs would look like and there's a photo of existing condition.
Yes.
Is that the way the staircase looks?
Yes.
And then how far is that from your sideline?
Staircase?
The current one?
The current one.
Same location?
Same location, yeah. Same location.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, I'm looking at your order of conditions here. It says here that it denies the proposed work which cannot be conditioned condition to meet the standards set forth in the municipal ordinance of bylaw specifically. Therefore, work on this project may not go forward unless and until a revised notice of intent is submitted, which provides measures which are adequate to meet these standards and a final order of conditions is issued which are necessary to comply with the municipal ordinance of bylaw. And B, approves the proposed work subject to the following conditions. See special conditions. I'm just trying to understand this because
The conditions are 1 through 27.
Well, I mean, I look at this lot and one of the reasons why the dock might be where it is is because they might not allow them to put a dock otherwise because they have to go across that salt marsh. This might be the area that they can get to the deepest water.
Yeah.
The easiest. I don't know that. I'm just kind of guessing that because I would think and I think this is a, this was a pre-existing dock, correct? This dock was here a long time ago with the old-
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, it was a long time ago. That's why I don't know anything. And also, we had a couple of meetings with
Is this new work, is this new work that you have right here? That picture right there, is that new work that you did?
No, we did not take any, we did not change anything right now with this staircase.
Those new boards, I'm seeing now?
No, 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 no. I think this is like example, like details how it could build. But this is, this is how it looks right now. I just take a video, I could, one I could show you, and it was exactly what's in the picture. I was in a meeting with Waterways Committee two, three weeks ago. And we discussed the same document. So what we finished to they're ready to give some some feedback to the conservation, but first of all, we need to give them some kind of offer what we could do for the seashells to relocate or maybe plant a new one somewhere, some places.
Sean, it looks like this is approved.
Yeah, no, it's approved with special conditions, yeah. It was denied in the first instance because of these things, but they put these conditions in. Okay. Did you submit a grading permit to them?
To whom?
The Conservation Commission?
Probably yes.
Okay, because let me ask you this question. You were back before this board not too long ago. Didn't you figure a bulkhead on the original house? Wasn't there a bulkhead designed in the original plan? Because this is a raise and replace. Where's the plan? Do we have that?
No, it was not designed on the original plan.
Why not?
Well, good question.
We knew you had a cellar, right?
Existing foundation plan shows a bulkhead on that. Much larger than an existing one. Smaller than one desired.
Is there a question before the petitioner?
My question was, do we have that in your package?
You have what?
The original decision as far as the plan that was approved?
Here's the, you want the decision? Here's the decision.
I just want, I want to see the plan that was approved. I didn't-
It would have been that packet in 2023.
I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, like everybody else, why this walkway's got to be three feet off the sideline setback? Why couldn't we set it 20 feet off?
Well, I think I've answered my own question on that because you're coming into the first of all, you got to deal with a no-build zone. And you're coming into the salt marsh, as I think Dick pointed out. Or you pointed out.
Yeah. No, 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 that's what I'm guessing, yeah.
Well, you can. You can see it on the picture of the that it's where the old dock is. They talk about the need for erosion control and
Yeah.
That was dealt with with the Concom, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And because the house already built, probably I maybe finish it like in next one or two. We have some also new septic system which cuts part of the basement for 10 feet away and right corner, it's pretty like not big.
Has that already, has that already occurred with the, with the old cesspool that's been filled in?
Yeah, so the right corner is pretty small to work with bulkhead or any other entrance inside.
Was it dry well over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't look like you have a whole bunch of freestanding water there at low tide, does it, huh? Gets marshy right out in front, low tide?
Yes.
That's the only place you can go with this.
Well, at least when you look at the existing dock and stairs, it's not a whole bunch to work with over there.
No. And they, I'm sure they don't want you running all sorts of pilings.
You know, I know I don't want to see that all disturbed. Probably be an oil sheen the whole length of the pond.
Well, it looks in bad condition.
I have the stamp plans up from the initial build. If you have any questions on it, I can see them.
Yeah, I got them here, too.
Okay.
Hi, Anthony.
It didn't, it didn't, it doesn't show a bulkhead, not that I'm seeing.
Hi, Anthony. I worked with your company before Davis Mall. I just realized the same.
Let's see if we can keep an order to the meeting, okay? You guys can have personal conversations later on. Right now, Mr. Igo is-
I'm good. You can go to somebody else.
Anthony? You have any questions to the petitioner?
I don't. I see what they're trying to do relative to the stair dock. I mean, that makes sense to me. Just visually and for setbacks, I'm with the the rest of the team that we had a choice and if it's a preference, I'd like to see it somewhere else other than encroaching into the setback area of the side yard, side yard setback, but it doesn't appear that there's a lot of options here. So I understand what the application's for. And you've answered the questions that everybody's had so far, which would be my questions as well.
Well, I think you answered my question, which was why can't if you move something way to the back of the property? Or I answered it by looking at the plans and seeing that that's a no-build area, for one. And two, you know, this is essentially a wooden walkway over sand leading down to a seashore waterfront. And so that it would certainly be under the purview of the Conservation Commission as opposed to this board. That's their role is to determine. I see no limitation on that within the order of conditions that are very well thought out and 20, as I say, 27 conditions in length. So if they're satisfied with it, and I know them to be a very stringent and thoughtful board, stringently applying the laws as it relates to water courses and wetlands. So I mean, I'm going to give to them all the credit in the world. I don't think I'm going to second guess in my mind them. I am also, like Mr. Martin, familiar with the property next door, which is a very large property. Can you even see your neighbor's house?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Leaves on, on the trees, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, it's a beautiful neighborhood here and we only seek to protect it and keep it beautiful. But well, as well, ecologically responsible area. So, you know, in my mind, we have very limited purview on these stairs. They are stairs. They are not a structure of habitable structure by any stretch. And I'm not saying that that doesn't mean we can't consider their location, but I see no other location. And it's merely, it's almost a raise and replace. You're going to take out the old and you're going to put in the new but better quality, so we're not seeing an embankment eroding there as quickly and badly as we do. So from that standpoint, I can support this petition. I think the location of the bulkhead is disturbing to me. But it's six or one half dozen of the other and the if we're looking at your house and we look to the left, that structure that abut, that structure on that property abutting to the left is further removed from the site of the bulkhead than it would be if we moved it to the right. Because that home is very closely, in close proximity. So again, I'm going to support the petition. I know it brought to a vote this evening.
Thank you.
And with that, I invite anybody in our audience who cares to speak in favor of this petition, please raise your hand and let us know who you are if you want to speak. Does anyone in our, seeing none, does anyone in our audience? By the way, I want to tell you, I commend you. You have a wonderfully well behaved young man sitting out there with you.
Thank you.
Not only is he handsome and blonde and having a blast, sitting back there waving occasionally, but he's also a very nice young boy and you ought to be very proud, you and
Thank you.
You and his mother. So with that having been said, does anyone in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, let us know. And there's nobody coming to the microphone because there's nobody else here. So with that, we close it to the public and put to the petition. We open it up to board discussions and deliberations. Let's start with you, Anthony. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'll take them piece by piece. The walkway, the deck, you know, that's Concom's order conditions are pretty well thought out. If they improve it and it works and it's to reform a previously existing walkway, I'm happy with that. That satisfies me. I think it'll look nice and being a good addition to the property. And in terms of the bulkhead, I think it's unnecessary. I think they meet the criteria here for the relief that they're requesting. I don't see it being able to go anywhere else. But so while we might have other designs and desires, if if we were able to, I don't think we're able to put it somewhere else or ask for it to be put somewhere else as they can. And I think they meet the relief, so I'm, you know, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Igo?
I agree with what Anthony said. I think the petitioner has met the criteria under the bylaw that he's demonstrated that the bulkhead is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's existing on the ground today. It's necessary access to get in and out of his cellar. They didn't have one on the original plan. I don't think the, you know, the neighbor, even if he was closer to the lot line, I still don't think that he would be impacted, negatively impacted by that bulkhead. The stairs, I agree. This is what was an existing dock area down there. You have to have stairs to get down to the shoreline. I don't think it's going to create any undue hazard nuisance or congestion to the neighbor next door. It's only used for him to access his boat down there. And I don't think it's feasible to put it anywhere else and Concom has already And Concom has already, has already looked at this quite closely and certainly they have determined that's the only feasible place to put it. So I am going to support this and I recommend the rest of the board support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jay.
I agree with both, both board members already. I think it's just a raise and replace in the stairs and I don't know where else you could put it and it really does need to have access to the basement. You're not going to finish the basement, are you?
No, we will finish basement.
Finish it?
Yeah.
So even more so. So, yeah, I, there's, it's really mostly the driveway right, right beyond that. There's not much there as far as other structures. So the house is way back. So I'm, I'm comfortable with what's being requested.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, actually, I have no issues. Well, along with what's been said relevant to the bulkhead or the stairway down to the water, I have developed a few other questions in the meantime, though. Did this ever come before the board for relief in terms of the setbacks and stuff? It's only got 19.5 foot setback from the street.
Yes, it did.
It did. So that was included in the original ones?
2009, or 23. 23.
Couldn't find anything in the 23 one.
Oh, really?
This was one earlier than that.
That's the one that Dick came for us with.
That was the raise and replace.
I was there, yeah.
See anything on that decision that talks about it?
Well, now I put it away, so let me find it again.
I put the, I put that elastic around it.
We, we talked to him twice and we, we got it moved over a little bit to try to situate it a little bit closer.
Yeah, yeah, we moved it a little bit. First of all, it was maybe one feet or maybe two feet closer. I remember UJ asking.
Talk about from the front.
Switch it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, we did everything we could to position the houses.
All right. And we agreed to 19.5 feet. You get a better memory than I do. And this old plan had, you know, like 15 foot front side setbacks, like input side setbacks, which we determined to think at that time were.
It also says a white oak removed by error in the front of the house.
Yes. Any made done about replanting or anything of that?
Well, we have some plan for some planting.
Are there any trees in the front still left?
Left two, probably two or three left.
And, you know, I think usually if something like that's removed by error, I don't know if Conservation said anything on here, I don't see anything, but typically it would be a request that it be replanted.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, first of all, we provide the conservation old plan which needs to be cut and what will will be like grown again.
And where's the driveway again for the house? That's on the right side?
Yes, on the right side of the house.
With all those trees out there, we have to plant the new one.
Yeah. It's a really strange street.
Well, yeah, Buttercup is so far back.
I know.
All right, I guess I'm, I think it's, in retrospect, I know we voted for this before and so forth, but seems like an awful big house for a little lot with all these constraints of conservation.
Well, I think most of them are normal. You'd see them in almost every order of conditions.
Not uncommon, I suppose, yep. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, well, we have two alternative, we have two sources of relief sought in the alternative. It appears to me, and I, I fully agree, that this is usually dealt with by us as a special permit, not as a need for variance on side setback. Secondly, I, I am expecting that any motion would be conditioned upon you complying with the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission in its whole. And that's, you heard us earlier tonight say that that's why we like to get these Concom input before proceeding, because that's their purview and we want to make sure we have that protected as best we can. So it would be conditioned, I would expect, upon that. You understand that, right?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would it be a modification to the old or just a new special permit?
I think you need the new special permit. We're creating a whole new non-conformity.
What is the current setback on that sideline? What we approved? Because this might be an extension, it might be an extension of a, a low.
I thought it was like.
Oh, is it, is it less than 20 feet now?
Yes. Oh. I think it's.
I don't care, one way or the other, doesn't matter to me. It's all the same thing. You're going to bring it to the registry, record it and whether it's as an amendment or.
If we can for the future boards, if we had modified the existing special permit.
That's fine.
Would be easier for everyone.
It was 13.6 before.
Okay.
Okay.
And this would make it 10.
So it's not, it's not creating any new conformity?
No.
So it's an extension and alteration.
Permit, and that's a 2023 permit, right? So is anybody prepared to make a motion relative to this requested relief? The first part of it being to modify the existing special permit dated 2023.
So moved.
And you've moved for what?
I've moved to modify the, whatever that special permit was, special permit number 4984, to allow for the construction of a bulkhead off the, I believe it's the Westerly side, to show 10.8 feet from the side set line, side setback.
And with reference to the order of conditions of the Concom? Subject to the order of conditions of Concom?
Did Concom talk about that bulkhead? Or just the, just the dock?
Just the dock.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll modify that. Yeah, that's, that, we can do special permit on those, those stairs too because they were pre-existing. Okay, so all we're doing, allowing is for them to raise and replace the.
Well, I don't even know that we need to do that. I think we just need, my, my concern is that with any chance we get to, to amplify the power of the Concom to state special quarters of conditions, we wanted, I'd like to see us doing that.
Yeah. And to allow the, the elevated stairs to be built where they are, three feet off the sideline setback, with the condition that they comply fully with the order of conditions set forth by the Conservation Commission.
Okay. All right. Is there a second? Who's that?
Second. Yep. Just have a question. Do we need to define them as greater below type stairs, not any extension?
They ask for elevated and the reason they're elevated is because they show on the plan, so we should reference the plan that he submitted to.
The elevation was, I thought that was the what, the, I thought that was the.
It's actually an elevator. It's these right here. It's the steps are elevated.
No, yeah, I'm referring to the bulkhead.
The bulkhead? We don't have anything to do with the bulk, oh, oh, the bulkhead to the basement. I'm sorry. I thought, I was thinking waterfront.
No, 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 no. That's, that's just a regular Bilco bulkhead, I guess.
That's what I wanted to make sure. It's not going to be an extension with stairs, covered stairs that come out from the house.
It's just going to be a bulkhead. See, they just, they didn't show it before.
Bilco style.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it was, it's my questions to you. It could be prefabricated or we could do some landing under the ground and some steps.
Whatever you like. If you want to put a foundation in and just.
It's no closure.
Yeah, 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 sure, 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 sure. It, it will be open.
You asked for approval of a bulkhead?
Yes.
That distance from the sideline, that's what we're approving.
Okay, okay, yeah.
The type of bulkhead is your decision to make.
Thank you.
And, and if we could incorporate and reference these plans submitted by him today? We have a plan stamped by Richard J. Hood dated July 8, 2024, entitled Site Plan. And the other one, the other one is.
Proposed stairs.
What do they call this? Well, this is a plant schedule, actually. But we could reference this too because it shows everything. This is a, what's it entitled? That's a good question.
Nothing on it in the lower quadrant.
Well, it says, it's, it's a plan. This is a December 2nd, 2021 plan, so this must have come before us before. This is probably in the existing file by Wet Tech Land Design, drawn by Wayne Tavars. I think you guys saw this before. This is probably.
This one shows the bulkhead. We didn't have a bulkhead before.
Well, no, it's here. It's dated 2/22/22 is revised and it shows the, it doesn't show any bulkhead, shows the stairs. It's all about the proposed stairs. So you want to, you just want to reference this, right?
Yeah, I was looking at a different plan, but I want to get this one in too.
It says 4/30. Yeah, this one says 4/30/23, Sean, just so you know.
Right, no, I was looking at this older one right here. Oh, which one did you say?
4/20/23. On the bottom it says.
The one with all the conservation. Revised, yes. Okay, so we'll put that one in the plan and also this one right here.
What's its date?
Revised 2/22/22?
No.
Says 4/30/23.
4/30/23.
And then it says revised on 2/23/24.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yep, 2/23/24. Yep. And then we have this one finally, the third one?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the one I was just speaking to, but.
Trees in back.
2/22/22.
And this one's revised 2/23/24.
Also, yeah.
So we'll just submit all three of these.
Good. So there's a second to that. That's Mr. Martin. Do you change your second, Mr. Martin?
Yep.
And your motion's consistent with that, Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Do it by roll call, please. The motion to modify, we still have two other votes we need to take. The motion to modify the pre-existing 2023 special permit to include the installation of the bulkhead as shown on these various plans and subject to the order of conditions of the Conservation Commission duly made as a motion and seconded, Mr. Penabiano?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Freyfry?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. That carries five to zero. A decision will be drafted. That will be filed with the town clerk's office. Once filed, the 20 days must lapse. That's a technical waiting period, assuming there be no appeal from that decision after being filed. You then will take it to the Bonsel Registry of Deeds and record it there and return proof of recordation back to our board administrator, okay?
Okay.
We also have a special permit request before us and I'm assuming you're asking us to allow that to be withdrawn without prejudice, right?
Yes.
All right. I knew that. So that there's a motion to withdraw. Otherwise, I have to depend upon poor Dolores to get these over to me so I can figure out what the heck I did tonight. Withdraw, Mr. Frey removed and Mr. Martin seconded.
Without prejudice.
Yeah, we'd have a much lengthier talk if it was to be with prejudice, so, so without prejudices. There's no need for discussion, I'm assuming, on that. So let's try it by roll, by voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, that carries five oh on the withdrawal of that request for special permit without prejudice. The same applies to the requests that you've made for the alternative form of relief, that of a variance.
So moved without prejudice.
Your voices are almost identical, at least to this ear. I want you to know. On a voice vote, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It carries unanimously five to nothing, okay? That means that that's withdrawn without prejudice. It's very nice seeing you. Once again, I commend you and your son, particularly for his behavior.
Mr. Chairman, he have three other siblings at home.
How old is this fellow back here?
How old are you? Eight.
Is that, is that eight?
Just became nine.
Is it golden?
Nine years old? Would you like to come and say hello to your mother on the microphone? You can just say hello and then we'll say goodbye.
Hello.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing you. Okay, and with that, we thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dolores.
Always good to see you, sir.
It was a pleasure to see you.
Yeah, well, I did on the, on the modification of the special permit, yeah.
Okay. Move to approve the minutes?
Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the August 8 meeting?
Actually, I wasn't, I wasn't there. I'm sorry.
You weren't there?
Well, actually, no, this is 25th.
There's two of them.
Both are here, August 8.
We only have three people here.
I'm good on.
Two people here.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't there.
Okay, so we can't even move, we can't even hear it tonight, right? What? Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, it carries unanimously. It's okay, you can leave.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
To stay too, though. You know, we, we enjoy your company.
It was a good time. Thank you.
We, we're known as the fun board on the town, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do adjourn?
Yeah, we can't do the.
You can't do the election of officers?
We need one more regular member in order to do the.
We don't even, we don't have enough people any day. Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll pick that up on another day.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you need five members. Yeah. It's not your fault he's not here. He can join us by Zoom next time. All right, so with that, somebody's made a motion to adjourn and we are therefore adjourned, right?
You're good.
Aye.
Thank you.